All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the New North Carolina Project Action First. I'm sorry, New North Carolina Project School Board Candidate Forum for Mecklenburg County. We at New North Carolina Project do have a sister nonprofit called New North Carolina Project Action First, but today we are joining you in our nonpartisan capacity with New North Carolina Project. Our mission is to help keep our communities engaged through a variety of ways focusing on four key pillars. So I am Dr. Amy Steele and I bring to you our organization's pillars of work. Our four pillars are civic engagement, or civic education, as we sometimes call it, public safety, housing security, and economic mobility. So today, we have the pleasure of being joined by some school board candidates. Others may join us, but we will continue and start with those we have now. So I am going to take a moment to introduce our school board candidates after I tell you just a little bit more about New North Carolina Project. So New North Carolina Project was founded in 2021, and as I mentioned, our mission initially was to engage the unengaged or disengaged electorate through a variety of ways, but mainly focusing on helping people find their power. Our goal is to get as many people to the polls to vote in every election, every time. So with that, we started to focus on voter engagement and voter turnout. We worked all across North Carolina, our first year, in 13 counties. These last couple of years, we decided to focus a little closer to home, and so now we primarily focus on Mecklenburg counties with a little sprinkling in Gaston and Cabarrus counties. So tonight, we bring you our candidate forum with Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools' school board candidates. So first, I'll introduce the bios or introduce you to all of our candidates. So Melissa Easley is a dedicated public education advocate, a veteran educator, and a proud mother of two CMS students. With over 15 years of teaching experience, Melissa brings firsthand knowledge of the challenges and opportunities within our schools. She is seeking reelection for the CMS School Board District 1 seat, representing North Charlotte, Huntersville, Cornelius, and Davidson. And I see some of our candidates coming in. If you all could just mute yourselves, we will continue doing the bios and introducing you all. Jillian King. Jillian is running for Charlotte Mecklenburg School Board District 4. She holds a Masters in English, or a Masters in Education degree and has classroom experience as a public, as a public school teacher, giving her firsthand insight into student and teacher needs. Jillian is an, is active in her community through volunteer work and through working with her HOA as well as other local initiatives, and she brings a practical, student-centered perspective to education leadership. She lives in Charlotte and is committed to supporting safe, inclusive schools and strengthening connections between families, educators, and the community. Anna London. Anna is running for District 6 School Board. Anna is a Charlotte native and an experienced workforce development leader, serving as president and CEO of Charlotte Works, North Carolina's largest single-county workforce board. With over a decade of experience connecting residents to family-sustaining careers, she has led initiatives that strengthen collaboration between education, business, and community partners. A proud public school graduate, Anna credits caring educators with shaping her path and fueling her commitment to lifelong learning. She lives in Pineville and serves on multiple local boards and committees. Stephanie Snead grew up as an only child in a single-parent home after her father's death in a tragic accident. Guided by her mother and grandmother's example of service, she volunteered at her local library and hospital, earning her the Girl Scout Gold Award. A proud public school graduate, she earned a Bachelor of Science degree in Environmental Science from the University of Texas at Arlington and a Juris Doctorate degree from Howard University School of Law. Stephanie is currently a school board member. Sharlita Hatch is a Charlotte native, proud graduate of Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools and is a longtime advocate for children and families. She serves as the City of Charlotte's inaugural Chief Data and Analytics Officer and Deputy Director of Innovation and Technology, bringing over 20 years of experience in technology, consulting, and data strategy. A first-generation college graduate, children's book author, and doctoral researcher at the Urban Education, of, in Urban Education at UNC Charlotte. Sharlita's work bridges education, community, and innovation. She lives in Charlotte with her husband and two children and is running for Charlotte Mecklenburg School Board of Education District 1. And finally, Toni Emma Hill is a Charlotte native and product of Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools with over 20 years of experience engaging with the district as a volunteer, parent, and advocate. She holds a Masters in Human Service Counseling, Executive Leadership, and a Bachelor's in Criminal Justice from UNC Charlotte. Toni has served on multiple school improvement teams, PTOs, and booster boards, and as a literacy tutor, test proctor, mentor, as well, giving her deep insight into the day-to-day needs of students, families, and educators. She is running for the Charlotte Mecklenburg School Board District 6, bringing a hands-on, community-focused perspective to education leadership. Now, I'm finished introducing everyone, but what I will do is I want you to get to know the candidates just a little bit more. So I have a fun little icebreaker. So every candidate, I don't need an explanation. This is just going to be straight off the cuff. You will figure it out as soon as I say it, okay? All right. Jillian, coffee or tea?
Tea. Easy.
Anna, coffee or tea?
Coffee.
Melissa? Melissa?
Tea.
Okay. Stephanie?
Tea.
And Sharlita?
Sparkling water.
Okay. Not an option, but we'll take that. Okay. Favorite fall beverage? Stephanie?
An Old Fashioned.
Okay. All right. We're starting off strong. Melissa?
Um, cider. Apple cider.
Cider. Apple. Okay. I was gonna ask what type. Anna?
Uh, apple cider.
Okay. Jillian?
It's popular. Apple cider.
Okay. And Sharlita?
Cranberry ginger ale.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, this one is very controversial, so I do want you to think very carefully, okay? All right. Duke or Carolina? Sharlita?
Carolina.
Okay. Good answer. Jillian, I'm kidding. Jillian?
Um, I'm not a sports person and I didn't go to either, so, um, I don't know. Duke picked one. Sorry, guys.
Okay. No problem. Anna?
Chapel Hill all day.
Okay. Melissa?
I'm from Illinois, so I'm gonna say Northwestern.
Oh, Lord. Melissa, okay. And Stephanie, Duke or Carolina?
Carolina.
Okay. Very good answers. All right. Fall or spring, friends? Fall or spring? Stephanie?
Spring.
Okay. Sharlita?
Gemini. Spring.
Okay. Anna?
Aries. Spring.
Okay. Melissa?
Taurus. Spring.
Okay. And Jillian, round us out?
Spring.
Spring. Okay. Fantastic. All right. So thank you so much. I just wanted to break the ice. I have been a candidate before, so I do understand these things are a little bit nerve-wracking and sometimes you're, you're an old pro and they're totally fine, but it always helps to just break the ice and also prove to all of our constituents watching that you all are real people. You are humans and you have real feelings. So we appreciate you and thank you for stepping up to the plate to run for office, each and every one of you. So I will ask you a few questions and give you the opportunity to answer. We will begin shortly and then we'll stop promptly at about 6:45, 6:50, and give our audience a chance to ask some questions. I will ask that you remain respectful throughout the forum. We do reserve the right to mute your line, and so our executive administrative assistant is in the background, and she will mute you if I give her the signal and things are not going the way we need them to go. So please stay focused on the school board, focused on what you're going to do to try to change or increase or improve outcomes of our students, and let's stay student-centered today, okay? Student and teacher-centered, but anything related to school board and not anything else. So thank you, friends, again for being here, and we will continue. So let's start with you, Anna. Can you share a little bit about your personal and professional background? And how has it prepared you to serve on the school board?
Sure. Thank you. So I am from here, so I'm a proud product of this community. I'm also a proud product of public education. And 16 years ago, I was an educator. I taught pre-K for a few years while getting a Masters in Counseling, and then I did crisis intervention and behavioral he, behavioral health here in Charlotte Mecklenburg. And then for the last 11 years, I have been strengthening this community, so Charlotte Mecklenburg, through education and workforce development. And so I think, you know, my experience in the classroom, then doing crisis intervention, behavioral health, working with youth and young adults who were enrolled in CMS schools and partnering along, alongside Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, the counselors and social workers and educators to now really seeing and understanding everything full circle, how critical and excellent public education really is to a thriving community. So that's my background, my experience, and I bring both lived and professional experience. I serve on quite a few committees and boards right now, all around education and upward mobility. And so I, I believe that I am the strongest candidate for District 6 because of my lived and professional experience.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. Melissa, why don't you tell us a little bit about your background and what positions you to be the best representative for District 1 on the school board?
Thank you for the opportunity. Well, I am currently the incumbent and sitting in the position right now. I am a 19, 19-year educator. I've spent the last 15 years working with CMS, 10 years of teaching, and I have two students in CMS. One at, in Huntersville at Blythe and one in our choice programs at First Ward Creative Academy. So I'm really excited to see both ends of that. I've also been an educational advocate. I've been working with education in the state for now over 15 years. And I have, I've gone to Raleigh, I've gone to Washington to advocate for our students and our teachers, and I am the only one that has governance, parent, and education experience.
Okay. Thank you so much. Stephanie? What qualifies you, based on your background, to be a member of our school board? And you currently serve as well.
Yes, I have the, the honor and privilege of serving as the Chair of the Board of Education, and I've also served as Vice Chair as well. I, I have been in this education space for, here in Charlotte, for almost 10 years. I ran for office for a school board a couple of times before I was a and in between that time, I really got to dig into education issues here in Charlotte. During that timeframe, I served as, I have, I have two children currently that are in CMS schools, one in middle school and the other is a graduating senior, yay, or wah, either one. But I was an active, have been an active CMS volunteer for many years. I had, was a Girl Scout leader out of one of our elementary schools. I have served on the CMS Bond Oversight Committee. I've served on the Education Committee for the, for the Black Local Caucus. I've served as the Chair of the Black Local Caucus. I've served as a founding member of an education think tank. So I have been deeply ingrained in, in education, in the space for quite a bit of time and certainly have a wealth of experience by being, having the privilege on the board for the past three years.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for your service, you and Melissa. Sharlita, what of your background or what background experiences do you have that qualifies you to be a member of the school board?
Good evening, everyone. I am Sharlita from Charlotte. I am so excited to greet you all today and tell you that I am raising the third generation of CMS students in my family. I'm so proud to say that as we think about the 157 people that move to our county every single day, having someone that is a product of our school system, a first-generation college student that knows the possibilities that CMS can provide because it has provided that for me. I have a third grader in CMS right now and also have a four-year-old daughter who will be in CMS. And there are three things that I would share with you that I believe is a value add to the entire board. One, on Monday at 9:00 a.m., I am defending my doctorate, my dissertation, and I have been studying for the last five years why families are choosing or not choosing CMS. And I think when we think about the state of public education and the dismantling that we see happening before us, having the voice at the table of what families are looking for, what they feel like they're receiving or not receiving is going to be critical as we move through these next four years. And it's important to realize that this is a four-year term, so really thinking about what skills do we need in the future and having a way in which we can reclaim and recruit families to CMS. I think it's going to be a, a strategic priority that needs to happen. Number two, I am the Chief Data and Analytics Officer for the City of Charlotte, where I'm responsible for our business intelligence and artificial intelligence strategies. I think every board needs someone right now with AI expertise as we think about how it will transform the way students learn, teacher teach, teaches, but also the way in which the district will run and how do we do that responsibly and ethically and make sure that we're not losing critical thinking skills. And then lastly, I believe we're in pandemic type times right now where people are feeling uncertain day-to-day of how things are going to impact them, what's gonna happen in a couple of days. Having a leader that is beyond advocacy and is steady and can provide governance and oversight to the community across the district, I believe, is going to be critical. I was appointed by City Council to serve as a member of the Civil Service Board, which is a quasi-judicial board. I was Chair of that board. I was President of the Junior League of Charlotte. And so having governance and board responsibility as well as being a parent, as well as being an instructor at UNC Charlotte, as well as bringing my lived experience, I believe I'm the only candidate that can honestly say all of those things.
Okay. Thank you so much. And Jillian, would you round us out?
Sure. Hi, thank you. Um, so I'm a veteran teacher in CMS. I taught career and technical education, various courses under that umbrella at First at Myers Park and then at JT Williams Montessori School, which is a middle and high school. So there's a wealth of experiences just in the classroom, boots on the ground. I do have my Masters in Education. I wrote my Master's thesis on children's opportunities to get outside, which took like sort of a dive into mental health and the structure of traditional public schools and physical health and safety and the ways that, you know, families feel about those at home and the ways that schools address a lot of the, the needs that children have or don't address those needs. And so between all of that and then my volunteer work with Piedmont Wildlife Center in Durham, where I was an education outreach volunteer. So I did outreach events for science education. And now I left, you know, teaching from, in the classroom to be a stay-at-home parent for my three-year-old. And so I've been focusing on the early child development and kind of looking at like, what do kids need for a strong foundation? And when they do start school at a pretty young age, when you really think about, I mean, they're still babies going into school, what is it that they need and how are we ensuring that they're getting that strong start from an early age? So those experiences of just teaching and volunteer work as an educator and then, you know, working at home and taking care of a young one. I actually worked at the Goddard School, so I also did like some, you know, early preschool stuff before teaching in CMS as well. So yeah, lots of teaching.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. As a former teacher myself and school principal, I know how critically important it is to work in collaboration with the school board following, you know, necessary protocols and procedures. So I'm gonna veer off script just a little bit. What do you think you possess as, and I, and I really want you all to think critically about this question. What skills do you possess and what strategies do you recommend or what suggestions do you have about how the school board will or can work more effectively with the teachers, with principals, to support the school district as a whole? And I want you to think in terms of, you know, some of the non-traditional things that teachers are able to do. They don't really make contact directly with the school board other than as a citizen to express, you know, a dismay or some type of concern or what have you. But in general, within the work practice, teachers don't reach out directly to school board members as a, as a general practice. So what skills and strategies do you possess or will you use as it relates to more effective relationships with teachers and administrators? So we'll start with you, Sharlita, and then we'll go in reverse.
Awesome. Thank you for that question. What I think that I bring that's probably a little bit unique is the ability to not manage or represent other voices, but bring those voices to the table. So one of the things that I'm working on right now is standing up a District 1 Teacher Advisory Board, where we have representatives from all of the different schools in the districts where the teachers can meet with me on, at the defined frequency so that I can make sure that I'm bringing those voices to the table and not saying because I was in the classroom 10 years ago, I know exactly what you need. Additionally, I think when we talk about how do you keep that connectivity between the school board and principals, I believe we need to restore back the respect and the autonomy and the prestige of the principal role. The way the media has demonized our principals, we really need to be countering that narrative because the principal is the guardian and the culture keeper of the school. And if we can showcase the amazing talent that we have within our principal leaderships, the skills, the education, the experiences, and the culture that they're bringing, I believe that will be a step towards attracting families back to CMS. And so I think we need to really focus on how do we highlight those 186 principals in a way that counters some of the narrative that's out there in the media. So those are the two things that I believe or strategies that I would employ that I think would be a little bit different.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Melissa, what are your thoughts?
So this is where I bring, where I really shine because I've spent so many years in the district building relationships with these educators. I was one, and so, you know, that was, that was one level. But I also, something I didn't mention earlier was I started and co-founded the largest pro-public education social media group and social, and resource hub in the state with over 47,000 people and it all for public education. I also helped plan the marches in 2018 and 2019. So teachers trust me. They see me already as a leader, as someone who understands what's going on and can have a conversation. And on top of that, I'm also a parent, right? So I have that unique ability to take the educational language that teachers are used to working with and understanding and changing that so that our parents and our community members can now understand that as well and join the fight to help bring the respect and the, the autonomy back to our teachers and to our staff. One of the ways I have done this, I've continued to be showing transparency. I've continued to be pushing out into the community. I've started my own newsletter. I was the first one on the board to do that and to keep it going for the last three years. I've also done a minute with Melissa every single month, both online and in person. For anyone that wants to drop in, ask questions, find out what's going on, and I have helped everyone from filling out applications to explaining why CMS has no control over the teacher pay. Like I have done all of that and I have the knowledge base and I have the experience in all of that. Also to mention, I am not well-off. I am struggling day-to-day on a teacher salary and what has now been, my husband and I have both been unemployed for the last 17 months. My husband just got a job a few months ago. So I understand what these families are going through and living through, having to try to stretch that paycheck. And when the school comes in and says, hey, you need to do this, this, and this, how much of painstaking and heartbreaking that can be? So having that connection between the school and the school community and the network that can help these parents, I've been able to bridge the gap in a lot of different places. And that is my favorite thing about being on the school board is being able to bridge that gap between our educators and our education community and our families who really want to understand and support our teachers any way that they can.
Okay. So let me just ask a couple of follow-ups to that response. So you mentioned two things that I want to follow up on. One, and I'm sorry about the unemployment situation, but you mentioned that you're not well-off. And I just want to dive into that because I think the narrative is that all teachers face, you know, lower incomes, et cetera, and that they are perhaps, you know, not financially in a position to, you know, thrive. And being a former teacher, I definitely understand that narrative, but I think there are also teachers who are financially thriving and that, you know, maybe that's not their narrative. So I would love for you to explore that a little bit more because, you know, I don't think we can put everyone in this monolithic, you know, space. But the second thing I'd love for you to explore a little bit more was when you said about Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools and you having to explain to constituents about how the school board does not have a say-so in salary. What are your thoughts on the influence of school board to county commissioners who do help to establish the budget for supplemental pay?
Absolutely. So I'm gonna rephrase because there were a couple of questions in there. I'll make sure I get them all. So the first one is talking about the well-off. Well, here's, here's the thing with that. Yes, there are some teachers that are doing great and, and, and are thriving and everything else, but I, I urge everyone to try to find a teacher that does not have a second job or a third job because that is how they're actually making ends meet, is that they are working more and more. And that is the issue that we have, is that the state is not paying our teachers a livable wage. The average teacher pay is $58,000 a year. And yet, in Mecklenburg County alone, a one-bedroom apartment, you need to make a minimum of $61,000 a year. So our teachers, our beginning teachers, early teachers are not even making enough. And that is why we have done such a, you know, trying to think outside the box with, you know, Chair Snead's lead on the Housing Authority, things like that. As someone who was homeless when I first got here, moving from Chicago on a teacher's salary, not able to find an apartment for over six months, that was a huge step for me. And, and Chair Snead understands how I feel about that and how I really want this to be a huge thing because that is one way we can help teachers even more, thrive even more because they are now, their basic needs are being met. I think really the second thing you added was about the influence of, and that is something that I really want to pride all nine of us on, is that in the past, we have had, CMS has had a very rocky relationship with the Board of, with the Board of County Commissioners. There's been a lot of back and forth. There's been a lot of misunderstanding. And over the last three years, I think we as a board and both Dr. Hill as well has prioritized that relationship. And I really believe we are on a completely different page now. And we are very grateful for our Board of County Commissions because they are on the same page with us that say, education needs to be a priority and is as harmful or hurtful as it can be for us to spend that extra money to getting pushing towards CMS. We know that education is the great equalizer and that all of upward mobility and, and personal growth and all of that starts with education. And so we are very lucky that we have a Board of County Commissioners that is still willing to work with us, talk with us, explain, and work to try to find a solution for all of us. I think that was all of it. Was, did I miss one?
No, that's right. That's good. Thank you. I appreciate that. And we do have a comment in the YouTube chat. So thank you, Ingrid's Lifestyle. As a parent, I appreciate and like your idea. Candidate Sharlita Hatch. So just wanted to share that. All right. Anna London, what are your thoughts? Same question.
Sure. So a few different thoughts. One thing that I'll say is that Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools is the third-largest employer in Mecklenburg County. And so educators and the staff, so when I say educators, I mean, every single person that works in CMS really is the foundation of making sure that CMS is a thriving public education system for our students and families. And so with CMS being the third-largest employer in Mecklenburg County, it is incredibly important that we take care of our educators and our staff. And so one idea, and I did not think of this on my own. I think it was actually a question in one of our questionnaires at one point. And the question asked something along the line, having educators or teachers serve in an advisory role to the school board. And I think that that is a phenomenal idea. You know, we have a, Charlotte Mecklenburg School Board has a student advisor. And so I think, you know, in whatever way most appropriate, I think that it would be, it would be great to have teachers, educators, serve in an advisory role to the school board. So whether that is actually on the school board, in specific committees, or a combination of those. And I think it should also be teachers, educators from elementary, middle, and high school and rep, and special education, and then representation from Title I and non-Title I schools so that we can hear directly from educators and staff who are in the day-to-day because the school board is responsible for governance, not getting in the weeds of the day-to-day. But we need to stay proximate. We need to be aware and in the know of what's going on in the day-to-day. And then I have done something over the last few months. and in the know of what's going on in the day to day. And then I have done something over the last few months called London Listens where I will, whether it's on live or in person. Sometimes I share it on Facebook, Instagram and share it publicly. Hey, meet me at such and such place in the district. I'll be there for two hours. Anybody can come and talk to me. So it's called London Listens. And sometimes I just send it in a text or, you know, I'll have someone on my team send it out to people that they may know. And I've actually had a lot of educators come and talk to me about, you know, some of them, of course, it is about, you know, wanting higher teacher pay and asking questions about the school board's role in influencing the supplemental pay that the county is able to provide. But some of them really, you know, their, their thing has been or their, their concern or questions have been around feeling more valued in the community. And that's what I've heard a lot of is, you know, they, they're, the school district does surveys asking educators and staff how they, how the culture is and how they're feeling, how things are going. But educators don't feel valued like they did in years past. And so I actually spoke to an educator who recently retired and she taught for years and years and years. And she said, 30 years ago, the way that the community treated us like we were local heroes and they just don't anymore. And so I think that there's a lot that we can do from a school board level to really elevate the, the district, the staff, the teachers, the educators, continue to elevate them in the community as our local heroes. They really are. So yeah, London listens, really looking at CMS, yes, as our public education system, K through 12 public education system, but also as the third largest employer, like CMS is an employer. And so it's really important as a leader in this community, I I consider it my job as the president and CEO to take care of my team. And so I view CMS, you know, the same way. So London listens, you know, really being serious about taking care of the team. And then exploring opportunities for educators to be advisors to the school board in a, in a formal capacity.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Jillian, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so it was the NCAAE survey that asked about that and said that. And I, I liked that too. You know, I thought like, absolutely, I'm, I'd be in support of that. But I think that's also something that we need to make sure, like, as we think about what relationships we can build between school board and out. Definitely making sure that we stay in a strong relationship with NCAAE and all of the programs that they offer because they do some incredible things already for teachers to support them. And so do the Mecklenburg County Association of Educators. So making sure that we have those strong relationships as well as sort of just being, I think, I think of the school board, yes, of course, you know, you govern, but I don't think of it as a leadership role. I think of it as a service role, like I'm a public servant in that role. And it's my job to go to the principals and the teachers and these schools and say, hey, what are your needs? And you listen and you take all those things and you say, okay, I see the need. How do I fill the need? And so you become this liaison to, you know, garner volunteers or help people navigate that process to being involved in the schools. And as people get more involved in their local school, they also begin to value the work of those teachers even more and see them as those local heroes. And so I think that a lot of this is just, it's relationship building. And that's something that like, as you asked about skills you bring to this, right? Like, that's something for me that I think is a skill I bring to this. You know, when I left teaching and was a stay at home parent in those early days of like staying at home with the kid, it was like, it's so lonely. If you don't know, like, it is so, so lonely if you have no support system. And I started just like reaching out in my neighborhood. Anytime I saw like another person taking a walk with a young kid or like at the park, you know, I was building these relationships. And now we have this group chat of like eight families that we all just help each other out. And it's stuff like that, right? You, you reach out and you say like, how can I help fill your needs? And in turn, community fills the needs of everyone. We have all of the knowledge, skills, resources, every single possible thing we could need right here in our own neighborhoods, our own communities to provide every possible need and want for each other and lift each other up. If we can just build the relationships where everyone feels that connection and feels that like want to help each other. And so, so for me, it's this, this mindset of service and being that connector, that bridge between what is it our schools and teachers need? And how do I fill that need? Not just in a role as this like school board member and making sure that our our policies and the things that we're doing help fill those needs, but just as a member of the community, trying to help, you know, organize more community around the schools. I think the back of my business card for school board says, putting education at the heart of community. That's really what I want is to help build this culture around every school where everyone is like in, you know, locked in, ready to help. And so I think that that's, that is the skill that I bring to the table. And that is what I want to do to help support our teachers is be the connector, be the organizer, be the person to help fill those needs.
Awesome. Thank you. And I think Stephanie, you will wrap us up.
All right. So I mean, a lot has been said here this evening, and I think the number one thing that has to happen is intentionality, right? So when we got onto the school board and I'm saying, you know, the new, the newer members, as well as our, our seasoned board members as well, we were intentional about connecting with families. And that means we went to churches, that means we went to cultural groups, that means we went to community events, organizations to collect data on what does the community, and it's not just parents, what does the community want our students to know and be able? So that kind of built our framework of how we move forward. So, and I'm saying that because I've been thinking about this quite a bit on how we intentionally could connect with those, right? So yes, we do have a survey that go surveys that go to teachers about, you know, what their working conditions are. Do they feel safe? Do they feel like they're being led? You know, do they like the leader of their school, the principals, like getting professional development? So all of those things. So we've been talking about this for a minute, like, how do we go deeper into that? And so I think that's a real analysis that we have to do, but it expands beyond the educator. I was speaking to the CMAE about this very concept that this needs to be intentional beyond just educators, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, because all of those people play into the experience of what our students and families have. So what does that, what does that look like? Could it be a model that's very similar to what the superintendent does? Like she has the, she meets with parents advisory committee quarterly, she meets with teachers quarterly. So could there be a model that mirrors that, that we can have a fruitful relationship or gain information outside of a way that is simply completing a process? So that's, that's one thing. The second thing is, you know, I very much believe in going to the people, right? So I used to have, I mean, I have this thing called sit down with Stephanie that I used to record, right? I used to record it and put it up on Facebook. However, what I learned from the experience was is that it could not, it would, it could not be successful in that way because it needed to be something more intimate and personal. Right? So it still occurs. It's just, it's just not public facing in a way, but there are public facing opportunities. Cause one of the things is that people that figured out that people love that along with Commissioner Darrell, who's the chair of the County Commission, as well as the mayor pro temp. We have this annual event, three years in a row, we've had the third iteration of it. It's called the East Side Summit. It's an annual event. We get hundreds of people from the community. And we don't lead the session. We let the community leaders lead the sessions. So all of those about what do talk to us about and what do they want us to deliver on? And the model can be very much similar to that because what we do, we come back the next year and report how we delivered on those things that were important to them. And some things, and I'm not saying this, that every, every time it's going to be successful, everything we're able because that's just the reality of it, right? But we are able to say the efforts that we've made in the areas that are important to them. So I think there are, there are lots of opportunities to move that next iteration of engagement with our, our CMS family, right? So I've signed all of my emails with, you know, thank you for being a part of the CMS family. And that includes every single person that works for CMS. So just incorporating that more intentionally as we talk about what's next for, next for the board.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach with this next question, which is not on the questions that we brought to you all. And this question is just going to be for the two current sitting school board members. And the reason I'm asking this is because of part of my experience today. I was at a Title I high school in CMS. And we had a program at the high school called Burgers, Fries and Table Talks. So we sit around, talk to the students about their civic responsibility. We also have a week, a monthly topic that we discuss, which is our table talk. And so we've had a two part series on setting smart goals and helping them to understand what they need to be prepared for post-high school, but then also while they're in high school. So some students shared, you know, their goals and we've been going through this for about two months now. Next month, they have already given us what they want to talk about. So we're very excited to talk about what they want to talk about next month. But my point or my question is, we had several students to express to us just the, and we know this from data, but just the, the things that, some of the things that they're not exposed to because their high school lacks the resources that other high schools have in the district. So they're on one side of town, other high schools are on other sides of town. And talking with the athletic director, you know, they may sell 150 to 200 tickets at a game, whereas some other, you know, schools may sell 1,000 tickets per game, which increases their gates. So there are just a lot of different inequities for a variety of reasons, mind you. So my question to the current school board members is this, how are you or how have you, with your experience and your time on the board, how have you addressed some of the systemic inequities across different schools in the district? Because you have, you know, some on one side of town that have access to things and then some on the other side of town that don't have the same level of resources. So how have you as a board member worked to address that? So we'll start with you, Stephanie, and then go to you, Melissa.
So the first thing I think that we should level set on is that the leadership matters, right? Because in reality, the leadership of the school sets the tone in how the dollars are spent for that school. There are additional resources in terms of funding dollars that go to Title I schools. And most of our schools in CMS are Title I schools. So there is, we are a title, I think 70 or 75% of our schools are Title I schools. So that is a reality we have. So what we talk about is that's, that's dealt with specifically when we talk about our budget. When we go through our budget cycles, so myself, as well as other board members have specifically asked about the inequities of, it could be anything from simple about a repair. What does the, when you talk about sports, what does a field look like in this school compared to another school? Or we are making sure that we are, we have the same attention to detail in terms of repairs, new school buildings. How do we get highly qualified teachers? Where are most of our substitute teachers going? It's specifically asking those questions to make sure that the experience, as much as we can, the experience is the same across all schools. And I will say this, that the superintendent has been very intentional, has been very intentional in, in terms of that experience. But the number one thing that we did is have a goal. I mean, we have a, we have all of the goals, but the guardrails is that you cannot forsake any other things because of socioeconomic class. Or those, it is intentional for that. So when everything is looked at through those lens, through that lens. And particularly in our student, and particularly in terms of educating students, that they are getting that same level of experience. But again, one of the things is, is that, and how do you do that? One of the things is, how do we get our highly qualified, highly qualified teacher to be at a school that is considered a Title I school or that does not have the performance of another school? It is thinking outside of the box. One of those things is teacher housing. Because one of, to be a part of that program, then you have to engage, like you have to be in a school. The priority is going to go to the areas of schools that need more support. So the question is, how do we think to make that more attractive? What additional supports can we put in to make sure that we're getting highly qualified teachers, experienced teachers in those classrooms? Because we know that's the number one thing that we can do. But the main thing, the main thing is, it is absolutely the budget and how those dollars are distributed per school and what that looks like. And that is, like I said, anything from the number of master teachers, the number of specialists that are there. So that has been, that has been leveled in the sense of it has been specifically determined that each school have, they're going to have at least a math specialist, they're going to have at least a reading specialist. So that's how we close those gaps that have been in the past discretionary. And now that they're not, now that they're not.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, what are your brief thoughts?
I'll add on from Chair Sneed. I absolutely agree that that is one aspect of our budget. That is something that we have taken very, very seriously. The other aspect is the visual, right? Where are our boundaries of our schools? Are the boundaries equitable? Right now in North Mac, I know that I have families of new subdivisions that have popped up over the last decade that are driving past one elementary school to get to another. And while we have some schools that are bursting at the seams and some schools that are under capacity, that is also equity to make sure that those resources are available. Because if we have schools that are 120 or 150% over capacity, the resources there are going to be a lot less than the resources at the school that is under capacity by the same amount. So that is one thing that, I'm really sorry, my camera's not working very well. I'm really, you know, that is one thing that I have been focusing on. We just did a whole comprehensive review. We're still working through that. And so I've been looking at where, where is our, our data coming from the future? We did a 10 year projection. I've been looking at those on those schools. I've been looking at, you know, we've got a new school, middle school opening on, in, in North Mac in the next couple of years. Instead of just looking at boundaries that would affect that school, we want to look at all the boundaries in North Mac and the entire district and see what we can do. Can we make things more equitable? Can we make things easier for parents? And, and, you know, when we lift the bar, doesn't matter who we lift, everyone succeeds and everyone grows better, right? So we want to make sure that those bars are high in every one of our schools up here. Because what people don't realize is that North Mac has very wealthy, high SES schools and very low income Title I schools. And my entire time, my entire 10 years in CMS has been in Title I schools. I love our Title I schools. They are amazing. And I want to make something very clear. Just because something is a Title I does not mean that is a failing school, does not mean that is not an equitable education. It just means they need a little extra support. And that is what I want to make sure that we get in that every student in every zip code has the same equitable opportunities, both transportation, both, you know, near their home, their community. You know, we build these communities in these schools around these communities and we want the community to be involved. Well, to establish a really good community, you need really good boundaries and thoughts and thinking of that. So that has been the area that I have kind of focused on because I know how important those be. And we want to bring the families into CMS and have them be part of that and be part of their school community.
Okay, thank you. So for those who are not on the school board, how would you answer that same question? So we'll start with you, Charlita.
Thank you for that. One of the things that I would prioritize is really an equity audit. I think it's important that when we look at the data that's been published around the achievement scores, that we start to really look and see what resources are available to Ms. Easely's point at our high SES schools versus our lower ones. How do we make sure that, that the opportunities, because we talk about achievement gaps, but there are no opportunity gaps that are pervasive that we can help close. I think we could leverage public and private partnerships, similar to the housing initiatives that Chair Sneed referenced. And how do we expand that beyond housing? And how do we expand that beyond housing? Particularly where we have so many private companies that are headquartered here, we have a number of nonprofits. And how do we make sure that just because you have a strong PTA or PTO, there are other schools that may not? And so those things become into opportunities. So what can we do from a district perspective where we can provide these opportunities across our district versus it depends on what school you're at, what opportunities that are available to you? The other thing that I would prioritize and that would go towards, you know, some of the research that I have been doing over the last five years, it's establishing a family and community engagement policy. At our Title I schools, you have to have budget that is allocated towards family engagement. But what does that look like? How are you using that budget? And how do we expand that beyond our Title I schools? Because we know that research says when families are involved and engaged, that impacts the culture of the schools and the outcomes for the students. And how do we reimagine what family engagement looks like? It's beyond just being at work in the book fair, as beyond just being at trunk or treat. And so what does it look like to provide opportunities in modern times that allows all families to be able to participate and be engaged in the levels that they can be? And I am so proud to be the CMAE endorsed candidate for our district because I believe that sends a strong signal that it is looking for other alternatives and ideas beyond just representing kind of the teacher voice and thinking about the broader community in addition to educators. How do we talk about making sure we have all of those different stakeholders represented and they can see those represented within their district representative as we think about how we reimagine education for the future?
Okay, thank you. Jillian, and then Anna.
Yeah, I think Charlita kind of hit the nail on the head. I was thinking a lot of, along the same lines, you know? So first it's about looking at what are, what is the differences right now? Like, can we gather all of the data that says, what do those other schools have that is working? What do some schools have that they need? You know, what are we doing already equity, equity wise? And then we do already have equity policies in place and are we implementing those with fidelity? Are we making sure that those things are, that everyone's being held accountable to ensure that those are already happening as well? And if not, why not? What needs to change either in the policies or in implementation? Like what is it that is standing in the way of making sure that we have that equity? And then I also think, you know, you said you were talking to, to students, right? About what it is that they don't have, that they would like to see. And our students and our families really know that best. And so I think there is value in asking our students and families and gathering data from them of, at each school site, what is it that you want your school to have that it doesn't? What opportunities are missing that you want to see? And how can we, like, how can we provide those? Whether it's private sector, whether, you know, get the nonprofits involved or volunteers or, you know, maybe it's providing transportation and a way for those students to participate in something at the next nearest school because we don't have the ability to give it to them at their school or whatever it is. How are we making sure that the opportunities that our students and families are wanting to see at every school can be provided in some way? And so I think that equity obviously, you know, is about ensuring that we're doing all the right things and looking at what is the barrier and, and, you know, closing that gap. But it's also asking our students, right? What is it that you feel you're missing out on and how can we provide that? And let's find some creative ways to make that happen for you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anna, why don't you round this out?
All right, sure. And I don't know if my camera's working or not. It's frozen on my end, but maybe you all can see me. I don't know.
We can hear you, but you are frozen, but it's okay.
I am frozen. Okay, all right. Well, so I, I think a lot has been shared and I love a lot of the things that have been shared. So I will just round it out or close it out briefly and just talk about partnerships. So I have partnered alongside Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools for the last 16 years. And periodically, as a district, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools will look at who are all of the community partners, whether it's, it is employers, private sector, the community-based organizations, practitioners, experts that are coming into the schools to support what those, you know, what the schools and the students' families need. And so I think that we, you know, that's an opportunity also to kind of an equity audit. So look and sit and, and determine, you know, what does each kind of zone, I would say community, what does each community or each zone of schools need? And can we maneuver some partnerships around the district where some schools don't have all of the partnerships that they so desperately need? And so not taking away from schools, but, you know, really looking at the district as a whole to say, you know, where do we have a lot of community-based organizations or employers, private sector, experts, tutors, social workers, et cetera, et cetera, coming, people like you, Dr. Steele, coming into the school to partner with the students? And so some schools are saturated with partners while other schools are struggling to find enough partners to come in. And so I think community partnerships is an opportunity to, you know, do an equity audit, what's working, what's not working, and where can things kind of be maneuvered around to where there's higher need or more need.
Okay, thank you, Anna. So we've got about four minutes left and I want to do a rapid fire of some of the questions we didn't get to, but so I'm just going to ask each person one question. And if you'll take about 30 to 40 seconds to answer the question, that would be great. I know it's hard, but I think you can do it. All right, so we'll start with you, Jillian. How can the district address hunger, student hunger, and food insecurity to ensure all students are able to learn and thrive? What are your thoughts?
So there's a lot of things we can do and none of them are going to completely fix the problem because that is a huge, huge societal problem. It's only getting worse because of the shutdown and SNAP benefits and things like that going away. And currently nonprofits are saying they can't keep up because it's, it's getting worse. I do think that there is some room in CMS budgeting and looking at like, what are we spending our money on and making sure that there is intentionality with every line item and prioritizing the things that matter most? And I think a lot of times for our students, the things that matter most are going to be providing that breakfast and that lunch. Because with the dismantling of public education at the federal level as well, like we also, nutrition programs are, are one of the things that like are losing money, are losing funding.
Yep.
So, so yeah, looking at our budget and then also community partners, food pantries, engaging those nonprofits, and, and, you know, asking around in the community and other private sectors, how can you help?
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Stephanie, how can CMS better support students with disabilities to ensure they have equitable access to learning opportunities and resources?
That's a great question. Because that is something that we have been talking about as a board recently, and it has to be a cascading effect. Like it starts the top all the way to the bottom. And when I say the top, again, it starts with the board and how we set our goals. And those goals apply to all students. It doesn't apply to just high-performing students or students from, you know, certain backgrounds, but that level of expectation is there. So that's, that's thing one. The second thing is, is making sure that the, our, all of those from performance area superintendents down to the classroom know of what we're required to do by law. Like we're required to provide these services and education and to make sure that we have the appropriate partners in place. And I've gotten this question recently and I can, and I know because I can see in the district that they're trying to be very intentional, ooh, you said a short answer.
Yes.
Very intentional about reaching out to parents to know what's available to them. There was a webinar recently specifically for parents of, that need additional services. So they're trying to go to those communities to make sure that they know the process for IEP 504, if you need speech pathologies, audiology, all of those things. So they're intentional as a part of our family and community engagement department on what is available.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, what strategies or initiatives do you think are most effective for creating safe, inclusive and welcoming school environments? 30 seconds. Melissa, we can't hear you, hon.
If I have 30 seconds, I'm going to say mental health because that covers all of that. And so making sure that we have psychologists and social workers and counselors available to our students. You know, that was something I worked on. The very first thing I did when I got the board was getting nurses in the schools and helping making it easier for nurses. So mental health, physical health, things like that, those are all the things that are going to be the very basic bottom level in order to, you know, make sure that all of our kids are taken care of and acknowledged and feel valued and all of those things. So I would say that.
Okay, just a quick follow-up. You said getting nurses in the schools. Charlotte Mecklenburg didn't have nurses in any of their schools?
No, they had nurses, but what the state law required was that the nurses had to have a bachelor's degree. And after doing some research, I realized that in the United States, only 55% of nurses have a bachelor's degree. And so we were already cutting the amount of nurses in half. And then we were trying to compete with hospitals, which we couldn't obviously compete with for pay or things like that. So that was something, we now have multiple layers of nurses. Now a CNA can be a school nurse. A, you know, RNA can be a school nurse without having that bachelor's degree. And so that was, that was the first thing I did when I got on the board was, was tackle that. And I'm very proud to say that it was written into both its own law and into the budget last, in 2022 and is now passed. So now we can, we have a lot of options.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Anna, teacher recruitment and retention are ongoing challenges and we know that public schools are not properly funded. So within the means of what's available, what steps can or should the district take to attract, support and retain high-quality teachers and staff?
Yes, so I'll be very brief and say, I think that there are, I know that Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools is already exploring this, but there are kind of grow your own models. So working on a pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship, registered apprenticeship opportunity for educators. So kind of a grow your own, learn and earn model to, we've got staff who work in the schools that could participate in, work in the classroom while they are enrolled in a, in an apprenticeship model. So they're taking the classes to become a licensed educator while working in the school already. So creating pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeship opportunities. I think there's also opportunity, something I participated in in high school was cadet teaching. So I did cadet, cadet teaching my junior and senior year. And I think that's an opportunity to make, you know, becoming a teacher, creating that opportunity for high school students when they're in high school to kind of catch them while they're in high schools, to make them interested and engaged in becoming an educator. So I think grow your own models, making it a work-based learning, career exploration opportunity for high school students when they're in high school as well.
Okay, thank you. Jillian, did I give you a question already? You did, I did. Okay, so just Charlita's left?
Yep.
Got it, okay. Charlita, why don't you round us out with this question from the audience? How can CMS partner more with local organizations to provide these services? There currently seems to be a lot of red tape in the way of getting help to the students. So this community member, I believe, was addressing a question that came up during the time of us talking about services to students. So, you know, community-based services, et cetera. And so they're asking about basically partnership with local orgs. How can we maybe help remove some of the red tape that organizations face when they're trying to work directly with the school system or directly with students?
Thank you for that question. And one thing that I think is good about my leadership is that I'm completely authentic and vulnerable. So I don't necessarily appreciate or know all of the red tape. But what I can say is I believe that with the housing initiative that has been demonstrated with great success, there were multiple stakeholders, multiple partners involved, and that if we can get the board, as well as the superintendent and the leadership team aligned, that I believe that there will be pathways to help get partnerships in place in a way that we can scale. So for example, and when I gave the example about PTAs and PTOs being able to have different community partnerships, but how that could provide inequities depending on the school that you're in. If we can look across the district to see how can we get this partnership to scale and we start to have people at the table talking about it in that way, I believe we can get it done. Because if we can get the housing initiative over the finish line, then certainly we should be able to get coding and we should be able to get, you know, different tutoring services and different access in that way. So I hope that answers your question in a very vulnerable way, but I believe that it is possible because we have a model and a framework that we can follow. Thank you for that question.
Absolutely. And I did get clarification from my team that the audience member was speaking specifically to mental health services. So would you like to add on to that because of the mental health services request or subject matter?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry, I was directing it at Charlita referencing the services organization.
My apologies.
No worries. All good. But I'd love to come back and get your perspective as well. Go ahead, Charlita.
I think with the mental health, it should be more of a proactive strategy. I think we have enough research out there that it's saying that our students are in a crisis. And so we need to figure out how we are embedding mental health in the culture of the school. So similar to, it's easily referencing about nurses, we need to think about how we are having that across the district proactively. I also think a differentiator is training our parents and those who interact with kids on different ways that they can identify ahead of a mental health crisis happening. And in order to do that, there needs to be education and awareness at, across the community, not just within the schools, but we need to make sure that the curriculum and the culture of the school creates psychological safety and has a mental health, a pro-mental health culture wherever students might be.
Okay, thank you. And Melissa, you are the one that brought up the mental health services. So if you could provide a response as well, that would be great.
Yeah, so with regarding with partnerships, we have quite a few partnerships. We've partnered with HRM, we've partnered with Novant to offer mental health services to our students and their families. And so we want to continue that. Some of that red tape, though, unfortunately, is coming from the state. And so we need to be very creative in how we do that because, I mean, just SB 49 said we could not teach about domestic violence unless parents opted in. So those kind of things, we have to kind of switch on how we've always done things. In the past, things have always been opt-out. Parents have always had the opportunity to opt their kids out of things. But now they have to opt-in. And so that goes back to meeting parents where they're at and making sure they understand that so that we can make those partnerships, so that we can identify those students that need help. So that if we need to bring in another partner or we need to scale up something, we know we have those numbers to do that.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. So now we have gone into a little bit of an overtime, but I do want every, I want each of one of you to be able to give just kind of your, and, and I mean this with all sincerity, one sentence about what you want to tell our audience in closing. That one sentence can be about voting for you, it can be about your website and your, you know, social media, whatever you want to say. And it needs to be a run-on, not a run-on sentence that has multiple subjects and multiple predicates, okay? So one sentence to close us out. We'll start with you, Jillian.
Email me at votejillianking@gmail.com or text at 704-493-0803 with all the hard questions. I will always give a clear, transparent prompt answer.
Thank you, Jillian. Good job. All right, Anna.
All right, so thank you for this opportunity. And again, I'm Anna London, running for school board, District Six, southernmost part of Mecklenburg. For more information about me, visit www.londonforeducation.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, we can't hear you, hon.
I would like to invite everyone to join my Chalk Talk newsletter at easilyforcms.com/chalk-talk. Or you could just go to easilyforcms.com and it's right there. So please join my newsletter and read about what we're doing.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I'm still standing in the gap, still fighting, still serving. CMS still needs Sneed, Sneed, the number four, education.com.
Thank you. And Charlita?
We know that public education is a crisis right now and we need to think about the skills that we need for the future. That is innovation, that is analytics, that's family engagement. Vote Hatch for CMS for District One. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all for joining New North Carolina Project, a 501(c)(3) focusing on nonpartisan voter engagement for this Charlotte Mecklenburg School Board Forum. We appreciate you. Thank you to our audience members who watched on Instagram, on Facebook and on YouTube. Please join us next month as we engage in yet another virtual town hall. Thank you so much and have a great evening. Bye.
Bye, thank you.